Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Kent City Council Committee of the Whole. Today is Tuesday, June 20th. We're gonna get started here. We've got a couple of things here on our agenda tonight. We're gonna get started by first, we call the meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Kim to do roll call, please.
Thank you. Council President Voice.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher.
I'm gonna admit her to the meeting right now and go ahead and mark her as present.
Okay.
Councilmember Core.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaux. Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. As I said earlier, we've got quite a few things on our agenda. Item 1 through 5, we've lost some stuff in part 4 during the presentation, so motion to approve the generalizes?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Thank you. Item number four, department presentation is coming up, so we'll start with operation. The first thing to have here is approval of the minutes of the committee hold from June 6.
Mr. President, I move to approve the payment of bills first.
Okay. Did we approve the minutes already?
No, I'll do that too if you want.
Good, good.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. But moving on to item number B, I know Paul was excited already to do this here. You wanna try again here?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. President, I move for payment of bills.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Move on to item 4C. This is a consultant service agreement, and we got Brian for IT is gonna talk us through this here. Brian, please.
Thank you and good afternoon, Council Presidents, members of council. Brian Rambunga, PMO Manager with your Information Technology Department, here to present again for authorization items C and D, which are two additional agreements for staffing and consultant agencies. Those agencies are Robert Half International and CC Kermy LLC. The IT department seeks council approval to enter into new agreements with these agencies so long as the costs associated with can be paid for within budgets established and authorized by council for the 2023-2024 biennium. To help bring a little bit of clarity around these new agreements, in Q4 2023, council approved an amendment with Robert Half International for the current biennium. That amendment extended an agreement for existing consultants only. The Robert Half Agreement we bring forward today leverages a cooperative purchasing agreement, the HGAC or Houston-Galveston Area Council Buy Program for only new consultants if we look to bring any new on through Robert Half for this biennium. The advantage with this co-op is it provides a lower conversion cost if we ever choose to seek it, and a ceiling for lower hourly rates for consultants through this program. The objective of our other new agreement with CC Kermy LLC is very similar. This agreement converts an existing consultant that we have through protingent from that agency as an independent consultant, again, for a lower hourly rate. So the gist really being, we have a couple of agencies, independent contractors, consultants, in IT's general buckets who perform professional services work for capital projects, and it will all be kind of consumed under the already approved $2.2 million that we had asked for for this biennium. So with that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
So Brian, just to make sure that this locks us in in a certain payment where they can't go up and down. Hourly rate is what this doing or what?
Correct. At least for the HGAC Buy Program with Robert Half, there is a ceiling that they cannot charge us above for certain roles or positions that we look to bring on.
And that's for the 2023 and 20 throughout 2024?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good. Any good see here? Any question, council member? My IT people looking to the left here, no questions?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm IT, yeah.
Look to my lawn, IT too, right here. Councilmember Thomas, any questions, sir?
No, I'm prepared. Mr. President, I would move to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant services agreement with CC Kermy LLC in an amount not to exceed $375,000, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT Director and City Attorney.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any question?
Short and concise.
Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Okay. Now, we got two though, right? That we gotta do the Robert Half one, right?
Yes, yes, I kind of wrapped both of those.
No, you did, but you needed two motions though, right?
I'm up here for the second one.
All right, okay. All right. The second one is on the Robert Half. Any question, council member? We good down here to my left? Am I right? Okay. Councilmember Thomas, please.
I move to authorize the mayor to contract for staffing and recruiting services through the cooperative purchasing agreement between Houston-Galveston Area Council and Robert Half International Incorporated if the purchase of these services is within established budgets that made during the term of the cooperative purchasing agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Brian, you are good to go. Councilmember Thomas took a real ease on you tonight.
Good, good.
That's good.
Quickly.
All right, let's move on to item E, change to the cultural community board. Looking forward to this year. You're always nice to hear from you, sir, so all yours.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Council President, council members. I'm here to talk about changes to the cultural communities board. These are the changes that we talked about during the adoption of the strategic plan, so this is specifically amending Chapter 2.56 of the Kent City Code entitled Cultural Communities Board to realign the mission, goals, and responsibilities of the board with the strategic plan. So the board will continue in advisory capacity to the mayor, council, and city staff. The biggest changes are coming to the responsibilities of the board, which we're adding a report, an annual report of the implementation of the strategic plan, as well as a progress ratings, a rating of the plan itself. So those are additions to the responsibilities of this board. The composition will remain the same as well as the terms of appointment, so I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, makes sense here. Councilmember Tommy, you have a question, sir?
I do, thank you, Mr. President. The word belonging, how do you describing that?
It's...
I'm not familiar with that. Sorry.
Right, so sometimes when you're included, you don't feel like you belong. So that's the next step after inclusion is belonging, having the feeling of being part of a group and belonging in that setting.
Community, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other question, council member?
All right.
Okay, please.
Seeing none. Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number 4470, which amends Chapter 2.56 of the Kent City Code to rename the cultural committee's board and realign its missions and goals.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
One quick one, please. When you're saying, I'm sorry, to realign its missions and goals, I didn't see that in here. Aren't they the same?
Responsibility, missions and responsibilities, yeah. Goals and responsibilities, they should be in the amendment. So I can...
Would...
The purpose and responsibilities are changing.
So realign its missions and goals and responsibilities? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so previously, the board was not really connected to the equity work that was happening within the city, so now we're aligning that, those responsibilities and purposes to align with the implementation of the strategic plan.
Would the council accept a amendment, a friendly amendment, add that to the end there?
So I'm not sure where you're going. These are, these are...
And adding a...
The responsibility already exists. He's just trying to align, from my understanding, to the, to the goals, is my understanding.
Right, they're very similar to what they were before.
Okay.
Sorry. Tammy, White City Attorney, I just wanted to point out, Councilmember Thomas, if it helps. So the ordinance not only just changed the name of the board, but we also revised the purpose statement as well as the specific responsibilities. And so that general motion that you have is to capture both the change to that purpose statement as well as the specific responsibility.
All right. So they can line together.
Correct.
I'll withdraw my amendment.
Okay. So...
Didn't get a seconded anyway.
You did not. So, we did get a second, so in discussion on the proposed motion on the table. Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay. We're gonna move on to item F. This is our attorney Tammy got us some quick changes to our resolution we passed last week.
Yes, I'm back to talk to you again about your bylaws and your rules of procedure. So I was last before you in May, where we adopted a change to your rules of procedure to go back to the committee of the whole structure. And we created different subject matters now that your agenda is organized by an appointed subject matter chairs. Well, the first time we implemented that change was at the June 6 Committee of the Whole meeting, and it actually went much smoothly than we had anticipated. And so in light of how well that process through, we have before you sort of another iteration that we're asking you to consider. This removes the subject matters that were originally assigned to certain meetings of your committee of the whole, to now open them up and remove those limitations, so staff can bring any matter before you on either one of your committee of the whole meetings during the month. So no longer will we have at the first Tuesday of every month just the subjects as operations, public safety, and parks and human services. And no longer will we have just on the third Tuesday of the month, the operations, ECD, and public works. Now, all of those items will come to you when staff needs to present them to you, and they'll just be organized under those topics if you were to approve this resolution. One other change that this resolution does make is currently, we just have your regular meetings of the committee of the whole set on the first and third Tuesday of the month, but as you know, your council meetings on that last month of December is on the second Tuesday. So we've added a change into this resolution to now align the committee of the whole and workshop meetings to be the same that you have with the city council. We're currently leaving the other meetings on the first and the third, and they will be canceled if they're not needed when we get to December, but at least they'll be there and set as a regular meeting, so it gives us more flexibility with the agenda instead of being limited by the special meeting limitations under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Excellent explanation. We talked about this here, but I think this thing is crystal clear, so Tammy told me she will not be coming back again on this year, so I...
Hope not.
I think we got it all covered. I mean, I think it makes sense. For example, we do have Parks and Human Service on a meeting night, but we don't have anything, right? So but if we have something, we can bring, we don't have to wait for those certain first and third week, so I think that's a good move. So, any question for Tammy team?
No.
Just straightforward.
Okay, if not, I'm gonna ask for a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2062, which enacts new bylaws, rules, and procedures of the Kent City Council and repeals Resolution Number 2061.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show unanimous pass. Tammy, you guys did a phenomenal job. I think this is right where we need to be, so thank you so much. Appreciate the team effort. Okay, let's move on to item G. We're gonna have our first quarter investment report, and Joe, we glad to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and I'm Joe Bartlamay. I'm the Cash and Investment Officer in the Finance Department, and today I'll be presenting the first quarter 2023 investment report. And this report was presented to the Investment Advisory Board on May 25th. So at the end of the first quarter 2023, we had cash in the bank, balance of about $6.4 million, earning an earnings credit of about 4.75%. That's an earnings credit that offsets our US bank fees. We have our Washington State LGIP, the local government investment pool, that's our liquid portfolio. About, we had $140.5 million with a yield of 4.758% and overnight maturity. We can access that money almost on demand as we need it. And then next, we have our long-term portfolio managed by PFM, and that one had an investment total of just under $201 million, earning 1.74% with an average maturity of 865 days. That portion of our portfolio is, because it's a longer-term nature, it's a little slower to react to the increases that we're seeing in the market rates. The pie chart below shows the significant portions in the state investment pool and US Treasuries. Here we have our five-quarter comparison of cash and investments by type. If cash at the bottom, we're, the green line, we're keeping just minimal cash available to meet our current expenses and needs. The local government investment pool, we're seeing a steady trend upwards in that portfolio balance. Next, we have our long-term investments, stays steady at right around $200 million. Total year-over-year portfolio, we're seeing a steady increase. The LGIP balance has continued to grow beyond our short-term liquidity needs. At the end, at our recent Investment Advisory Board, the decision was made to purchase additional investments for our long-term portfolio. This will help to extend the portfolio duration and maintain compliance with our one-to-five-year maturity target. We will continue to maintain a significant balance in the local government investment pool, and this will allow us an opportunity to purchase some long-term investments at today's higher yields. Next, we have our three-year comparison of total cash and investments, and you can see a nice steady increase year-over-year. The 2021 is the dark line at the bottom, followed by 2022 above that, and first quarter 2023 above that. And just a reminder that we received a significant receipt of the ARPA funds in the middle of 2021 and 2022. Next, we have our interest earnings over five quarters. The dark bar at the, on the left is general fund only, and the lighter blue bar is all other funds combined. Can see significant increase year-over-year, especially in interest earnings. That LGIP state investment pool reacts very quickly to the market. It's provided some nice interest earnings for us. Next, we have our total cash and investments by funds. So that entire portfolio, this is the portion that belongs to each of the various funds throughout the city. Can see significant portions in the general fund, the street, capital and project funds, utility funds, and insurance fund. Next, we have our long-term portfolio only. This excludes cash and the state investment pool. If I could draw your attention to the bar chart on the lower left, you can see that significant portions of our portfolio will mature within the next two years. So again, this is a good time to make some new investments in longer-term, in longer-term investments and extend that maturity ladder out. Next, we have, this slide demonstrates policy compliance for our portfolio, and all of our various investment types are well within our established policy. And lastly, we have our portfolio allocation over four quarters. Really no significant changes year-over-year or by quarter, really. Any questions?
You guys are doing a phenomenal job, right? And as we move on, of course, I'm part of this committee, I still ask the question anyway. Do we anticipate any type of movement and changes with adjustment for our investment, or we gonna pretty much stay the course that we on right now? For our investment today, right? We've been pretty steady, making good money to you based on the market and everything that's going on. You see us pretty much stay in the same pattern that we go on today?
And a similar allocation, yeah, going forward. We'll work with our investment advisor to determine what the best path forward is, and we're, we plan to incrementally increase that long-term portfolio as we determine our cash flow needs.
Any question, team, for Joe?
This is a big responsibility. You guys are doing a phenomenal job, and I appreciate everything you and the team doing, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Very much.
All righty. Okay, let the fun start the meeting. Let's get ready to start here from our committee chair. We don't have anything from our Parks and Human Service for, for Chair Michaux, and that's good. So this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item on the agenda today, 2023 State Legislative Criminal Code amendments, and that's Tammy, or City Attorney.
Again.
Good afternoon again. So I'm before you with an ordinance that deals with five different bills that our state legislature adopted this last session. So in, of the five bills that I'm presenting to you, they are creating new criminal laws in the state of Washington that the state legislature adopted that either already are in effect or go into effect in July of this year. Kent Municipal Court is, who processes and adjudicates all of our misdemeanor crimes that occur in the city of Kent. In order to confer onto the court the jurisdiction that they need to handle those misdemeanor crimes, we have to adopt them here locally in Kent. And so the approach that we've taken here for as long as I've been with the city is sort of a belt and suspenders approach. So we have one provision in our Kent City Code where we just adopt very broadly all misdemeanor crimes that have already been established by our state legislature, along with all other statutes that you need in order to interpret and apply and sentence folks for violations of those statutes. Then, as an additional measure, just to ensure that a court wouldn't disagree with that general approach, we also adopt them specifically by RCW reference. So we will go through and every crime that makes it a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor, we will adopt by reference that specific RCW. So what's happened now is we have these new laws that go into effect that our state has adopted. We don't yet have those codified by the code reviser, because it takes them some time to do that. So the ordinance that you have before you is adopting the session laws for those five different bills that the state legislature has adopted. In the motion sheet that you have in your packets are the specific bills that are at issue here. I'd like to take my time today to really talk about sort of the Blake Fix bill, which I think is what you're gonna probably have the most questions about. But if you wanna talk to any of those other bills, let me know, and we can certainly give you some more information on them. So with the bill, known as Senate Bill 5536, the state did go through now in its special session and adopted both a knowing possession of drugs bill, along with a knowing public use of drugs in public. So we, here in Kent, because the state had failed to act during its regular session, had adopted our own local ordinance. So now that we have this state bill, we have to go look at our local ordinance and see what needs to give, because we have been preempted by the state on penalties related to violations of the Controlled Substances Act. So that's one sort of preemption that they've made against the city of Kent and other local ordinances. They also did a very broad drug paraphernalia preemption, and that's gonna be an issue that is also gonna be implicated with some land use portions of this bill that are gonna be discussed with you later by Kristen from our ECD Department. So now with this ordinance, what it does is it takes out our local provisions, so now the state law provision is what will apply, but there are some of the local provisions that you adopted here that we can still keep in effect, including our local deferred prosecution program. That will still be in effect even after the state law provision takes effect. We also have a local provision that makes it unlawful to throw or deposit both drugs and drug paraphernalia. The piece that relates to drugs, we can still enforce in Kent. Given the broad preemption that the state made with respect to drug paraphernalia, we will not be able to enforce that piece. So the ordinance before you now revises it to take out that drug paraphernalia piece, and we will... and we will be left with what the state has provided for us with which respect to drug paraphernalia is nothing when it comes to possession or depositing it on the ground. Just for your own comfort, though, I do believe there are some general laws of applicability that we'll be able to use to deal with those issues should they come up. The one other piece with this ordinance is the state adopted its bill that goes into effect on July 1. Your ordinances, when you adopt them, typically have a 30-day effective date, and we cannot meet that timeline to have them in effect on July 1 unless you declare an emergency. So the ordinance before you does declare an emergency, which would allow this ordinance to go into effect immediately upon passage. But that does require a unanimous vote of all council members that are present. So if it moves beyond the committee of the whole tonight, it is set to go on your council agenda tonight as well, on your consent calendar, but it does require unanimous passage to be effective in time. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Tammy?
I have a quick one. Some of these are saying effective 4/20 or effective 4/25, so they're already...
They're already in effect. So they are not provisions that we previously had specifically adopted in our Kent City Code, but remember, we still have that real general broad provisions that we did adopt already that says any RCWs that are enacted by our state are in effect here in Kent also. So if police were to come to us with a case that falls under one of those bills that's already into effect, we would rely on that general adoption to go ahead and file that case here locally. And I think that is sufficient under the law. But again, because we're dealing with crimes, we don't want to take a chance of a court deciding otherwise. So that's why we sort of do this belt and suspenders approach.
Thank you. There are no questions, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend council declare an emergency and adopt ordinance number 4468, amending the Kent City Code to implement state legislation that enacts new crimes, addresses drug paraphernalia, and criminalizes the possession and public use of drugs. Second. Motion and a second. All, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Fincher? Okay. Any ayes? Motion passes. Back to you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCord. Appreciate that. We'll move on to the next one is, excuse me, ECDC, and this is Chair Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. We just have three items on the agenda for ECDC this evening. The first, Michelle Wilmot is going to talk about the Lodging Tax Grant Awards for Spring 2023 application cycle.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Michelle Wilmot, Economic and Community Development, as well as staff liaison for Kent's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The Lodging Tax Committee met in May to discuss the awards that they'd like to potentially consider that after the March funding cycle. We have two funding cycles typically in March and October. I wanted, given I have a short timeframe with you all this evening, I wanted to make sure that you have, if you had any questions, you could ask those about the awards that we've given. There's, most of them are all repeat awards, with the exception of a couple. And I wanted just to provide a couple of highlights on those. But first, I wanted to verify if you had any questions for me.
I'm sorry, any questions?
Okay, great. Well, given that most of these are repeat events, I wanted just to draw your attention to a couple of new ones this year. And one we're really excited about, and this is brought forward by a woman named Christina Orokiyasami-Clark. She is a Kent resident who happens to be an international chef and culinary instructor for very famous chefs and a cookbook author. And she would like to bring to Kent an event called Taste of Kent, Taste of Community. And she is looking to really highlight the refugee and immigrant-owned businesses and restaurants here in our community. She does culinary food tours, of which they sell out immediately. Apparently, I got squeezed in on July 6. If any of you want to join me on that day, I will work to get you included. But they are looking to do 12 different videos featuring Kent eateries and restaurants and markets here, and really promote those videos online and what have you, looking through Spring through 2024. What we are really looking forward to doing is partnering with Christina and her team. We had a meeting with them last week in the mayor's office, and we got to meet her. We got gifts of cookbooks, which was a fun treat. But we're looking to really leverage and partner where we can, given Kent has a Cuisines of Kent series already. And we also have our International Festival, which has a food component to that, as well as our South County Chambers of Commerce. They do a Taste of Kent. So we're looking to figure out how we can really build off of her efforts. Christina has 56,000 followers on her social media account compared to Kent's 17,000. Not to say anything about ours, but I think we can really build off of this really great local chef in our community who really wants to highlight our food cuisines. The next thing I wanted just to bring to your attention was Pacific Raceways has been recommended to have an award this year. This is an event called the National Hot Rod Association Northwest Nationals Event happening in July. That event is slated to bring about 35,000 people to Kent and all collectively Kent Hotels and Renton Hotels and Auburn and Toquillik Hotels can't house that many people. So it's gonna be a busy weekend here in town. But they expect to bring a lot of folks here. Besides just the people in town, there would be expected to be over 1.3 million people tuning in on television for this national event. So we are working with the organizers and promoters on how we can absolutely ensure that Kent Hotels are included in promotional packages and where visitors are absolutely directed to Kent Hotels and Kent entertainment venues here in the city. So those are the two new grants that have come forward this year. And besides that, the committee was thrilled with the number of applicants, and we hope that you will consider supporting these recommendations as recommended by the committee.
Thank you, Michelle. I know Council President Weiss, I believe you sit on that committee.
Yeah, and I would say that we have quite a free application, and it's not a given, right? I mean, we really want to make sure that, you know, the hotelers, they have a lot of say-so in how we distribute this money, and we want to do heads in bed. But also, at the same time, we want to make sure tourism is a big part of it, right? So we can give back to the city. I think the one that really excited me is the one that you talked about with the foodie, right? So I just think by, just with her track record and being able, wanting to be able to reach out to Kent, because we have a lot of diverse type food type stuff in here, and to bring that together and then promote it, it's really gonna be phenomenal. So I'm really looking forward to that. So, yeah, it's a pretty exciting time.
One I'm very excited about, I know the NHRA one, I know the mayor had been talking to them this past year, trying to figure out how we can work with them to promote that, because there are a lot of people that come to that event. So very excited to see something new. Any other questions? All right. With that, I have a motion. I move to award the Spring 2023 Lodging Tax Grants to the recipients and at the funding levels identified by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee in the total amount of $170,000, and authorize the mayor to sign all grant agreements subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just reading on this, that will go straight to consent calendar, so. Awesome, thank you. All right, next up, we have Bill Ellis to talk about an agreement with Kinetic West for STEM and Career Connected Education Development Project.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Good afternoon, everyone. I last presented on this project on April 10. We've since signed a memorandum of understanding with the Kent School District to pursue a joint first-ever career and technical education plan through STEM. We did a joint review with Kent School District Administration Staff of the responses to the RFQ, and we interviewed two of the four applicants for the role. We've decided and selected Kinetic West. Kinetic West is a Seattle-based social impact consulting firm that works across sectors to build common purpose and get things done in the communities. They have worked with a lot of clients that on referrals have expressed that they were one of the greatest consultants they've ever worked with. They worked with Career Connect Washington, is a core strategic consulting partner to the state since 2018. They've worked with the Greater Atlanta United Way to scale youth apprenticeship. They have worked with a number of the efforts that I think we're most interested in seeing their connections and understanding local application. They've worked with the Everett Public School System. They've worked with the STEM Education Innovation Alliance, the Washington Business Roundtable. I could go on. We were very impressed with their qualifications, and we would recommend to proceed with the scope of work that we have negotiated with them. That's in your packet. We're looking to do an assessment of all the current offerings and all the wonderful things that Kent School District is already doing in career and technical education, but also doing a review of things at a regional level and a state level, and trying to ascertain where the priorities ought to be. There will be a public input component of this. I think it was one of the things that was very impressive to us from Kinetic West was some of the team that would be working with us have attended schools in South King County, have grown up here and understand the value of the opportunities. We also heard very well from some of the members of their team about how to work with employers and how they've done that in other states to make things easier for them to participate in providing their advice and support. So their ability to bring in and manage, help manage with us, the voices both from employers but also from young people, I thought was very compelling in the interview process. And we're just frankly very excited to get started with them on this work. So I would ask for your support today to proceed with the contract and answer any questions.
Awesome. I think this sounds great. How about any of my colleagues' questions? All right, this sounds like an easy one. So I move to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Kinetic West to develop educational resources to be utilized in the Kent School District in an amount not to exceed $140,000 in ARPA funds, subject to the final terms and conditions acceptable to the mayor and city attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously, thank you. And then lastly, for Economic and Community Development, we have the land use implementation of Senate Bill 5536, which is the Blake Fix. Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you. It's good to be here. I am not Kayleen. She was, that was a good pivot. But I am here filling in on her behalf. And really, this was a team effort. So I do want to give a shout out to Adam and Tammy as well, because they have worked tirelessly. If this seems like a little bit of a surprise to you that we're here about Blake, it was a surprise to us as well. When the state legislature came in for an emergency session, they decided to add in some things that related to what we can and cannot regulate in terms of land use. So tonight, we're going to be doing part one of a conversation to bring us into compliance. And then we recognize that this is a more meaty topic that we will need to discuss, but we will have time during the comprehensive plan update to do that further. So I'll go over a little bit of background of why I'm here for land use, what we currently do to regulate the proposed uses that are in the new state law, and then talk about what we're going to be proposing now as well as later on. So Tammy already did a great introduction earlier in this meeting on what the Blake Fix is, specifically how it relates to land use. There's requirements around how we regulate our essential public facilities. And an essential public facility is a type of use that's designated to say, the state has said, "This is so important that cities or counties cannot deny the citing of them in their facilities, or in their cities or counties." And so we are allowed to regulate them, but we must allow them. And so the state in this new Blake Fix or state law 5536 identified opioid treatment facilities, recovery residences, sometimes referred to as group homes or halfway houses, and harm reduction programs excluding safe injection sites as new essential public facilities. So they're specifically calling it out and saying the city must allow these types of uses. They also defined some of the uses, so we're incorporating those definitions. And then they put on a final requirement that we can't treat them differently than other public facilities. And so we had to look at the way we currently regulate to make sure that there's no substantial differences. So what do we currently do? Right now, as of 2016, we regulate something called opioid substitution treatment facilities. The new law calls them opioid treatment programs. Essentially, they're the same thing with one minor addition in the new law of what would be required in order for it to qualify as that program. So in 2016, there was another state law that we were responding to. And so we came up with an idea that these facilities, or council adopted a plan that these facilities are allowed in a specific area. And I would say it does not logically make sense when you look at a map, because we've changed our zoning over time. So I'm gonna show that map to you so you can understand. But we designated them as allowed in the previous Commercial Manufacturing One Zone. That has since been changed with Rally the Valley into different zoning designations. And so the boundary right now looks a little bit funny. But our intent with this is not to change the policy direction of council, but to make sure we're still in compliance. We do not currently in our code identify or contain any regulations for harm reduction programs. And so that is a substantial, not a substantial, that is a new definition and regulation, and we'll address how we added that in. So this purple hash mark is where the previous CM1 zone was. And so you can see, we had that boundary of CM1 zones. And so we said, "This is an appropriate location." When we did Rally the Valley, we identified that we were changing the zoning. We didn't change any of the surrounding zoning in terms of what we allowed for residential or other uses around that area for the opioid substitution programs. But we did recognize, okay, we have this defined boundary, and the goal at that time was not to change that boundary line. And so it now looks like it's part of a couple different zones, but it's still intact in the same area. So it looks, there's been questions about how did we come up with these lines? They weren't arbitrary. It was, there was a purpose behind it. This is, again, just to show what that looks like today. Right now, so I put the 2016 map in, so you can kind of get a sense of what council said. These were adjacent zoning and what was allowed. The development may or may not have been built at the time, but the zoning allowed the development to be built. And then this is what it looks like on a map today of the existing uses. As you get further north of 167th, you get into a lot of industrial uses. But the Starbucks and 7-Eleven are kind of the key landmarks on 84th if you're thinking about that boundary. So what are we proposing? So as I said, we're doing a phase-one change to make sure that we're in compliance with state law. The bulk of the Blake Fix really is coming into effect on July 1. And so we wanted you to have the full package of what we're proposing, and hence why we're coming today to you. So the first is to update the term and definition of opioid substitution treatment facility into opioid treatment program. Really, what that means, there's not a huge substantive difference other than the opioid treatment program, the new definition, also requires that these facilities provide a comprehensive range of medical and rehabilitative services. And that is directly from the state definition. We're adding a new term and definition for harm reduction programs. Again, that's defined in the state bill, so we pulled that definition in. We also are amending the use table. So we didn't say where harm reduction programs would make sense to be located before, because we didn't have it as a use. And so when we added the definition, we wanted to make sure we identified the appropriate locations. For the time being, we took the 2016 council direction and said that opioid treatment programs were appropriate in this location with these conditions. And what we did is we added in harm reduction programs and just copied the same locations for where they're allowed and what those regulations are. We, I will say, we recognize there's a wide variety that falls under this program for harm reduction programs. And so Phase Two will look into that in more detail to further evaluate appropriateness. Footnote three is in the use table. It describes what the requirements for that conditional use permit are and what the applicant's burden of proof are. Some of those were requirements that we really identified as this would make sense for all essential public facilities, not just the specific type. And so we moved it into the broader conditional use permit requirement. So footnote three and that last one go together. So we didn't remove any of the requirements for the opioid treatment program. We just shifted where the requirements were found and how they applied to other facilities. So if you choose to move forward on this proposed code changes in ordinance tonight, it will be rolled onto tonight's consent agenda. We do, again, recognize there will be more efforts, and this aligns perfectly with our comprehensive plan update and the required code to make sure we're consistent. Essential public facilities have continued to evolve since 2015, when the last comp plan was updated. And so we already had its scope to look at the appropriateness and any other requirements, so we can add this into that effort. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So just one question I have. So it doesn't necessarily, you're not changing the locations that these can be. You're just updating the definition of what's allowed in that particular location?
Correct. So we took the... We took the stance of, "This is so limited and we didn't have time to have any conversations about real policy changes," that we'll keep it as is. If council's interested in that in the future, we're happy to come back during the broader essential public facilities conversation.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. And just for my own clarity, we will not be required to have needle exchange centers, correct?
So under the definition of harm reduction programs, we are not allowing the needle exchange or any other drug paraphernalia as part of a harm reduction program in the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right, questions from anyone else?
I do have one. So, okay, we, you are saying that during the comprehensive, the comp plan conversations, we will have an opportunity to look at additional zoning, like or additional
Yes.
Land that would potentially
Yes, so
What are they, EPFs, EFs?
EPS.
EPFs.
Yeah, so not all EPS. So an example of an EPF could be a large transit facility, a jail, an airport. Not all EPS are in this zone, just the specific opioid-related ones. But we understand that there may be more locations, especially for harm reduction programs, that make sense. Or there may be additional requirements that we need to evaluate, but we didn't have enough time. There's other state requirements. If we add on things, then we may be unintentionally making it so that they can't be cited and then we run into a foul of that law. But there will be an opportunity.
Okay, great, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember, Council President voice.
Thank you. Just curious and maybe Pat, so based on new changes coming about, I mean, is this something we can go in more detail in the workshop that we have planned or what would be my question?
The workshop being the council, the upcoming council retreat?
Yeah.
I'll defer to the big boss on that one.
Well, I think we could, but I think it'll be premature. It's going to be rolled into the comp plan process and that, as you know, is going to be a process that takes a while. And these are, this is a pretty hot, but this is going to be a hot button issue that needs a lot of attention from planning staff before it gets to you. So I would suggest we take it in the normal course of the comp plan amendments.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you. I'm struggling with having the state telling us what to do here. It just hits me wrong, you know? And I think I'm going to be voting a no on this actually, so sorry.
Well, and I think at this point, we honestly have no choice.
I know, that's the bad part, which I don't like either.
All right. So then, I know some of these other things we voted on tonight, does this go to consent? Does it have to go unanimously, Tammy?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Question I was just asking.
Okay. Because I know a few of the other things we did this evening had to go.
So the Blake Fix bill is the bill that keeps on giving. So when the state adopted that bill, there's like three different effective dates. So what I presented to you about the criminal ordinances, those all go into effect on July 1. There's another provision in the bill that goes into effect in January of 2025, I believe. This provision dealing with the land use part goes into effect on August 15th. So it's 90 days after the end of the special session.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions?
All right, with that, I move to adopt ordinance number 4469, amending Title 15 of the Kent City Code to implement amendments made to the revised Code of Washington concerning the location and operation of opioid treatment programs, recovery residences, and harm reduction programs.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so motion passes five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn this back over to Council President voice.
Okay, thank you, Chair Trout. Now we're going to move on to Public Works and Councilmember Fincher, are you able to facilitate this, Chair?
Aye.
Hey, can I make a recommendation to you, Councilmember Fincher? We have Mr. David Payne, he got three items, but we got a gap in between one. So if possible, I'd like to have L, M, and O go to keep David up here from coming back and forth and then we'll go with the other one, if that's okay with you, ma'am.
That works for me.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. First thing we're going to do is to have David come up. We're going to talk about Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan and we're going to be getting money. And we will also be taking the other two, the conversation on the other two, although we'll have to vote separately.
Okay.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. David Payne, City Transportation Planner. I'm here to present this evening several different items, the first of which is a sub-agreement with the Puget Sound Regional Council Governments for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan to, hopefully, to gain an agreement from council to accept up to $472,000. If y'all recall, back in January, we presented on the tip program and on potential grants. We were really in the middle of the grants application process, a number of applications have been put in for 2022 and we hadn't heard back yet. At this point, we have heard back and this is one of the items that we are fortunate to receive. What is the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan? What is the grant program itself? From the U.S. Department of Transportation, the purpose of the grant program is to prevent death and serious injuries on the transportation network. How do we do this? By focusing on comprehensive safety action planning and implementing projects and strategies that prevent death and serious injuries on the transportation network. On the left, we have a screen capture of the Safe Streets and Roads for All USDOT programming and also a chart showing some of the recent fatal and serious crash injuries in the central Puget Sound region. And you kind of have to squint a little bit to see the trend. Some might describe it as more or less flat. If you compare the last nine years, there's been a slight increase in fatal and severe crashes in the Puget Sound region. And one of the items in particular that we've been hearing from PSRC and others has to do with the increase of pedestrians, unfortunately, as a percentage of the fatal and serious crash involved. So the good news is, if you'll allow me to frame it this thus, is that in Kent, we already do a good bit of planning and anticipation and action for safe streets and roads improvement and that we call our Local Road Safety Plan. So what, really what we're intending, what we would like to do with this grant is to do an update of the Local Road Safety Plan and use the update to qualify as a USDOT Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan. So what does that entail and how do we do these things? So the first is what makes it a Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan grant? So some of these things may sound familiar from the Kent Local Road Safety Plan. So that is data-driven analysis. A little bit different, we are going to include a public engagement process. And for those of the council that were involved in the Transportation Master Plan, this is going to look similar to that in terms of outreach and involvement, of robust outreach and involvement. We're still going to use a list of countermeasures, similar to what were previewed in the Local Road Safety Plan, but similar countermeasures for the data that we look into. And then also a commitment, a public commitment to reduce death and serious injuries and ultimately to qualify to be eligible for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grants, to unlock those larger infrastructure and programmatic grants that could be used for, for what? For a lot of the things that we already do in the city. It could be enforcement, it could be infrastructure, it could be programmatic, it could be additional education. We're going to use the process to help inform what those are. We're also going to be using the opportunity to take a closer look at the sidewalk needs from a network perspective throughout the city, using geographic information systems and in a way similar to what some of our neighboring cities like Renton, Federal Way, and Shoreline have done. So we're looking forward to doing that. And as far as an update on where we are presently, we have a request out for some assistance from a consultant. We're going through a purchase process now and we are, we'll be coming back to council next month for a briefing on what the Safe Systems approach is. So we'll look forward to that. And hopefully later this summer, not too late in the summer, we'll be returning to council for a recommendation on the contract with a consultant to help us get this work underway on the July 18th, I believe. Now, that was a lot of information. What questions can I answer for council at this point?
I see no question here, Chair Fincher.
Do we want to go ahead and move on to the next one then? And vote, or do you, so that we will vote at the end, all in a group, all three?
Okay, sounds good.
So this one is grant funds to the Washington Department of Transportation and Highways for the local programs. And then the one following that will be the summer 2023 transportation grant opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher and Council President. It is my distinct honor and privilege to present the awards through the Washington State Department of Transportation that we have received notice of in the last, the last month and a half. When we presented on this item, these items in January, we had some inkling through the Move Ahead Washington Program that some of this was coming, but none of it had been decided yet. And so, you know, until the ink is dry, you don't necessarily want to start counting things. But I'm happy to be able to report on behalf of Public Works this evening, the awards for the transportation grants through the Washington State Department of Transportation. And as Councilmember Fincher mentioned, I'll be having a short update on the summer nominations process. To recap, every other year, we, the cities in Washington have the opportunity to apply for or receive grants from primarily four different sources. Washington Legislature, in our region, the Puget Sound Region Council, the Washington State Department of Transportation, and the Transportation Improvement Board. So when we reported out in January, we were, we were in the middle of having applied for a number of those grants and not having, had received them yet. And without further ado, here is the colorful map showing the lighting up of the different transportation improvement projects that we've been provided funding for. There are seven projects on the list shown, representing both Washington State Legislative Appropriations, Washington State Department of Transportation Awards, and one from the Freight Mobility Strategic Improvement Board. They really represent a cross-section of projects in and across Kent, but ultimately they all provide multimodal capacity across the network and throughout their specific locations. They also represent work that has been underway for quite a few years and it represents sort of the ongoing commitment and dedication needed to have projects come to fruition across the city. So I will go through each of the projects briefly, in brief, sort of by their category, just to touch briefly on them. The first is the two awards for, through the Washington Legislature, really the gifts, if you'll allow me that. The first is for a stretch of the Meet Me on Meeker project, roughly between, or specifically between Kent Elementary to the Interurban Trail. So this will provide an all ages and abilities, a section or completion of a section of the all ages and abilities network in central Kent. And the award is for approximately $10 million. So that's going to go a long way to helping implement that section and bring to fruition the vision that was really started a number of years ago by this community and this council. The second project is the 224th Corridor Completion, also representing a number of years of vision and commitments towards making that project happen. This is to complete an upgrade to the corridor from the East Hill to the Kent Valley. And it, again, represents work that's been going on for over six years. This helps bring into alignment the vision, the community, and the ongoing effort of council and others to help bring these projects to fruition. And I know we're very excited about them in Public Works. The next project on the list is through the Freight Mobility Strategic Improvement Board. It's for the next and final segment of 76th Avenue South, the South Phase. This is to continue the road section you see on the north end that would help elevate the roadway above the FEMA flood plain and bridge over the, I believe, the Mill Creek with the bridge structure and improve the fish passage through the area. This represents another sizable award of $5 million. And I neglected to mention what the 224th award is. It's a very sizable number, so I need to go back and correct that, address that. This is a $20.6 million award from the state legislature. Back to 76th Avenue South, this is a $5 million award from the, from, sort of really a partnership between the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board and the state legislature. We kind of didn't have a knowledge that this was coming, at least not with any certitude. So we're quite pleased to be able to receive this and apply it to a project very shortly that is anticipated to go into construction. Moving on to the next category of projects, these are more active transportation projects, a series of four. The first two, another section of Meeker Street, Kent Elementary Separated Bike Way. This item has been before council a number of times, so we've got the illustration on the upper left-hand corner, along the frontage of Kent Elementary School. This is a four separated bike way and this is for $1.8 million to, again, extend and connect the all ages and abilities network in downtown Kent. And then the second item is for the SR 99, State Route 99, or PAC Highway pedestrian hybrid beacon on the 24, 800th, 24,800th block to 25,000th block. You see an image on the left-hand side of a pedestrian crossing the six-lane highway. This is an area that has some documented pedestrian use and was previously conceived as part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program through Kent. We submitted but did not receive award through that program, but in the old adjective, if you don't, at first you don't succeed, try, try again. We submitted it for a second grant program through the pedestrian program and received that this year. And that will provide a pedestrian hybrid beacon crossing at that location, an award of just about $560,000 to improve the pedestrian network where people are using it. And then the last two for the presentation this evening, the first is, in January, we mentioned a project that had been nominated by a consortium between, or partnership between WashDOT and PSRC for a, an RRFB crossing at South Second Avenue, or Second Avenue South, just south of downtown, along Willis Street, shown in the illustration on the upper left hand. We're happy to be one of the five communities in the state of Washington nominated for this grant award for an inaugural program funded by the Washington State Legislature. We're really proud of, to be able to accept this, to potentially accept this project for $683,000. So again, the program's purpose is to connect, to make connections across state highways or former state highways. And so this helped meet those criteria. And last but not least, the Meeker Street and 64th Avenue street improvements shown in the lower left-hand corner, we had previously received awards, a grant award to help with the design or the redesign of that intersection with the southwest leg is already completed through private development, but this grant will help us to improve the rest of the intersection. The intersection is the main entrance for an exit egress for Kent Elementary School, just to the south, south and east of the intersection. And so this project qualified for the Safe Routes to Schools Grant Program. And at the end result of this will be to reduce the crossing distance by approximately half for all of the kids and students attending Kent Elementary School that attend via foot or who walk or walk, bike, or roll to get to school. And that is a $1.9 million grant award. So that was a roller coaster of projects. And if the chair will allow me, the indulgence of just one more slide, giving the update on the remaining grants of applications for this summer. Our work never, never ends and we're okay with that. It's on an ongoing rolling basis, we are constantly being strategic about what we're going after, what we're trying to tee up for applications to match the criteria and trying to bring it home for the residents of Kent. The update for, the update for today is shortened and sweet, hopefully, and it's another successful story. We had presented in January. We had presented in January, potentially going after another section of Meet Me on Meeker West, but now we have received notice of award for that section, so we're going to move on to potentially, I don't want to jinx myself by saying the last section of Meeker, the Meeker Project in between the Green River and the Interurban Trail, but this is the last one we have in the tip, so maybe I can, I can say it that way. This would be for the section between Washington Avenue South and Thompson Avenue South, overlapping the areas between the Puget Sound Regional Council Award that we received last year for the Thompson to Interurban Segment and the Kent Elementary to Interurban Segment that we received, the lion's share of funding from the Washington State Legislature. So that's, that's the update for what we would nominate to go after this, this summer. And then next month, we'll come back with hopefully an update on the, the remaining Puget Sound, PSRC project call for an equity pilot program later this summer, and for the Transportation Improvement Board project call, once we have a little bit more handle on what the criteria and what good nominated projects would be for that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody, any council members have any questions or would be happy to stop presenting.
I'm happy to see. Council President, would you please invite people to add their questions if they have any?
Yes, thank you, Chair Fincher. Any questions? We love grants, so I don't need to be too much. I think we're okay. Chair Fincher, you want to go ahead and start with the motion, please?
I do. I move to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to execute an agreement with the Puget Sound Regional Council for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan in an amount of $472,000. amend the budget, authorize the expenditure of grant funds up to $118,000, and local matching efforts subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions? Any discussion?
Don't see any, Chair Fincher.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are going to go on to the next one, and that motion was for, again, the Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Next, I move to authorize the mayor to accept grant funding through the Washington State Department of Transportation, Highways, and Local Programs Office in the amount of amend the budget, authorize the expenditure of grant funds, and matching funds to complete the projects, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second.
It has been, any discussion?
I don't see any, don't see any, Chair Fincher.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to accept the grant funding for the Washington Department of Transportation Local Programs Office. And the final one is the, is the, moved one too soon.
It's, Councilmember, it's that, the third was just an information item.
So we're good.
That's why you don't have them. Okay, then we are good to go on that one. Thank you very much.
You got Tony dancing and waiting in the aisle here, so.
Thank you, Council.
We have the King County RePlus Competitive Grant information from Tony Donati.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. It's an honor to be with you this afternoon. My name is Tony Donati, Conservation Coordinator here in the Public Works Department. Today, I would like to brief, briefly speak to you about a competitive grant application that we partnered with the City of Renton to provide education and outreach to local businesses who predominantly speak Spanish and Vietnamese. Earlier this month, council approved the mayor to sign the King County's RePlus pledge, and that focuses on keeping recyclable materials out of our landfill. Cities who sign this pledge are eligible to apply for these competitive grants to perform waste reduction efforts. The city was invited by the City of Renton to apply for up to $100,000 of King County RePlus grant money, and this money is, again, to provide this recycling and organic education outreach to businesses who are staffed, in our case, with primarily Spanish and Vietnamese speaking, in both Kent and Renton. So if funds are, if funds are procured, they would be split between the two agencies, and then a consultant would be hired to perform, to work with these businesses and Republic Services to right-size service levels of garbage, recycling, and organic waste. The consultant would also educate these businesses on the new organics management law, which requires certain businesses to separate and subscribe to organic collection services. All these efforts totally align with the goal to reduce recyclables and organic waste being sent to Cedar Hills landfill, and there is no match required for this grant, and we're expecting to hear back from the county in mid-July. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
So there'll be some, oh yeah, Chair Fincher, in July, that's when we'll probably have to take some action and, as the...
Yeah, we'll see if we...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. This is just info only today. We're just going to see if we've applied for it. We'll see in July if we get it.
When we get it.
When we get it, it'll be huge, because just think of the problem we have, how little actually gets recycled? And if you can't read a sign that tells you it's recycled, then that's another, that's just another barrier in the way. So if we can actually teach people about recycling, that moves the needle for all of us. Any other discussion?
I don't see any more. Lights it up, Chair Fincher.
Well, then, that was information only. Thank you very much, Tony. That's it for Public Works.
All righty. You have one more. I got Melissa over here dancing in the hallway, too.
I'm saving the best for last.
Okay.
Sorry, Melissa. The James, is, the James Street Storm, Storm Drainage Improvements.
Yep. Okay. Yes, it's a little bit of a mouthful, unfortunately, but it does a good job of explaining what we're trying to do out there. So hello, Melissa Dahl, Public Works Design Engineering. Hello. Talked to all of you a number of times in the past about Mill Creek, and I think you're all very familiar with flooding as a result of Mill Creek. This is a more focused approach to one of the issues that we have out there along James Street. So when we have flooding along Mill Creek, we oftentimes have a pretty similar, similar picture to what we have up here right now. What often happens is after the floodwaters have receded, we tend to have flood impacts along the southernmost lane of James Street. That's one of the eastbound directions, and that tends to take a little bit longer to drain than the rest of James Street. And so this project is focused on addressing just specifically that portion of James Street. We're still working towards the Mill Creek reestablishment project to address the larger issue, but this is to address the remnant localized flooding. So as we're familiar, I mentioned before, the southernmost lane experiences prolonged kind of localized flooding. For location, this is actually located next to Mill Creek Middle School along James Street. You can see the pump station in the back. Most of these pictures are looking east towards the hill, so that's, you'll notice the skies are blue in those pictures, so it's, it's after the storm has passed, it's after the rest of the road has drained. We do still have impacts. We do limit people driving along those roadways in that lane, and so this would help to get the road open faster to keep traffic moving. So what we're proposing to do for this project would be to add additional storage capacity along James Street. This is an image of what it might look like when it's completed. Presently, we only have one catch basin in that location. Right now, we'd be proposing to add additional catch basins that would feed into the existing trunk line out there. That would add more capacity, that would allow it to drain faster into the system. That system does feed over to the pump station, so if we can get the water to the pump station, it will get it out of the area. We just need to promote the water to move in that direction. And so we are aiming to do that work later this summer. I do want to remind everybody that we did receive funding for this project from the Subregional Opportunity Fund. That's, it's not quite a grant, but it is money that we received from the Flood Control District. We received about $225,000. We're likely going to need a little bit more for the project that is covered under the drainage fund, so we're going to take it as far as we can go and supplement the rest with that. And unfortunately, because we are going to be having to work in the roadway, we're going to have some road impacts as a result of this project. Worked really closely with our construction department to really figure out exactly how few days we can get this work done in. So it's going to have road impacts. We're aiming for 10 days right now. All eastbound lanes will be closed during those 10 days. There are going to be 10 consecutive days, so it will go over the week and the weekend. We made special attention to make sure there was no big city events happening at showware. We're proposing to do the work in the summertime. We've worked with the school district to make sure that we're going to minimize impacts to the school. We really want to be good neighbors in this situation. We know a lot of people use James Street, so we really want to make sure that we minimize impacts to the general public. We will have at least one lane of westbound traffic open, ideally two. It really depends on the project and how quickly they can get the work done in the middle of the street. Right now, the picture you see on the screen is actually the proposed detour route for eastbound traffic. We would send everyone up along 94th Avenue. It's a little out of the way, I recognize. We put a lot of thought into that. We chose to go to that. That's actually the first street with a street light. We want to make sure that we're not causing backups, we're not having people stop in the middle of lane to do a left-hand turn. So it's a little more out of the way, but it will provide a more direct route. So all being said, we're expecting that to happen later this summer. We are still coming down the exact schedule, but we are going to be providing a lot of public outreach for that, which leads to my final slide. We've already kind of started our first round of public outreach. We've provided residents along that, that whole impact area with letters, the letter you see on the right-hand side, sent out more than 700 letters, overwhelmed the post office, all that fun stuff. And so that has gone out. We have also prepared a city website. We're going to be sending out postcards in the near future that will have QR codes that will direct people to the website. We're working with multimedia to produce social media outreach. And then right ahead of construction, we're going to be putting out PCMS boards, portable changeable message boards, those ones that will provide dates that show the exact closure. So they'll be kind of hitting everybody from all directions, one way or another. Everyone should get it, and if not, the people who drive on the road will start seeing it on the signage. So that's, that's right now what we're aiming to do along James Street. That is, anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
So, so top of James, right, so I can come all the way down to, what, 94?
So just for eastbound will be closed, westbound you can go all the way through.
Oh, okay. And then going up?
Yeah, so just going up, you're going to have to go on central up to 94th, so. It's just that, it might be a little bit slower. Like I said before, it'll be at least one lane open for westbound. We're aiming for two. We expect that, we can't dictate how the contractor will do it, but we anticipate that they'll start in the middle of the road and work their way towards the sidewalk.
And can you get the dates one more time again, please?
We haven't settled on the dates, but we're expecting later this summer. So once we have the dates hashed out, we'll provide that update.
And I think Councilmember Troutman have a question, and Chair Fincher.
Thank you. Thank you. Couple things. First of all, this is great to have it happen during the summer, because I know that come fall and winter, when the rains come, it will be much appreciated. Did you mention, well, we have our own crews do this, or does this have to go to bid?
We did bid it. The reason you didn't see it before was we, because we had such a limited amount of funds for the grant, we wanted to find any way we could to reduce costs. And so we actually rolled this into a separate project, the 2023 Water Main Replacement Project. So that came to your desk a few months ago. We saved a lot of money because it was such a larger project that also had storm components. So we've already bid it, we've already selected a contractor. They've already started on the water main replacement. We're going to be issuing two separate notice to proceed, so we haven't issued the notice to proceed yet for this project, or for this portion of the project.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question? I think we're good. Chair Fincher.
Thank you very much, and even though it's not a grant, we still appreciate the dollars. So with that, thank you very much, Melissa. And now, that is it for Public Works.
All right, thank you, Chair Fincher. And, you know, we're a little over, over timeframe, what we talked about, you know, during the summer. There's a lot of stuff going on, and we'll make adjustment, right? So I think we're okay, we're on schedule. However, what I said, I'm going to allow the, us, me, council, to take a five-minute break, and then we'll get started here right after that, okay? All right, thank you.